Good morning.
It worked.
My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you, the two parties attending here, to the March 30th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Want to welcome Councilmember Montoya for joining us. We'll go ahead and start the meeting with it. I hereby call to order the March 30th, 2023 public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. Commission members will introduce themselves on this. This is an open, public hearing and being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. Proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commission members present are six on it. It will require a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public, excuse me, members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them on a later date if necessary. If you could put your phones on mute or silence them, would appreciate it there. Jim, how would you like to start off introducing yourself?
Hi, I'm Jim Kloszuski, and this is my second meeting as a member of the Planning and Zoning, and I'm glad to be here.
Good morning. My name is Tom Hutchison.
Ted Gambogi.
Tom Riley.
Susan Graham.
Now, members of the staff will introduce themselves when they are speaking on that. Next item is the approval of the March 9th, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If no corrections, is there a motion concerning the minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Tom?
Tom Riley moved to approve the minutes of the March 9th, 2023 meeting.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second to the motion?
Susan Graham, I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, same. Minutes pass. On that. Next item on the agenda is SITE 23-002, Site Plan Review for an 18-unit apartment complex on approximately 0.98 acres. Zoning MF-M, multifamily, medium density. Property owner is VSCK Investments LLC. Applicant, Stroll Architect, Inc. Site APN 111-11-131. Location 836 Valley Street. Tammy.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. Tammy Dewitt, community planner, the City of Prescott. So before you, as a site plan review for a proposed 18-unit apartment complex, there will be two buildings are proposed with two stories. Parking meets the code requirements with adequate fire circulation. And as you guys are getting very well familiar with these, with any water service application has good water issues, so, community, we have a site plan that comes before you. So this is to meet that requirement for the water policy. See, I didn't say it because of water policy. The property is zone multifamily, medium density. It's located kind of east of Frye's Shopping Center, so this is an infill project. There's currently a single-family residence on the property that will be demolished and then apartments will be put in. And these are considered infill projects because we already have the infrastructure in place, the zoning in place, and there's no other changes or improvements required for, in that regards to those issues. Here's the imagery of the property that kind of shows you it is in another area where other apartments, actually, right on the east of this one, last meeting, we had an apartment complex approved that went to the city council yesterday. So we see this is one of those areas that we see some redevelopment going on with multifamily housing, which makes sense. It's closer grocery stores, closer to the amenities where people can walk, and it's more user, more pedestrian-friendly developments we're seeing now. And here's the property in question. It already has some trees on the property, which we're hoping they preserve some of them in the landscaping, and the single-family residence that's there will be demoed to allow for the new development. This is a site plan that they're proposing. It has been reviewed by our fire department with a couple revisions they had to do to meet fire requirements for circulation, but otherwise, the buildings, it meets the height requirements and the setback requirements, and there were no other issues from any of our other reviewing agencies, and this is nowhere near the airport. Here's the proposed renderings of what it'll look like with, hopefully, like we said, keeping some of the old growth trees on the property to buffer it a little bit, but this is in a multifamily area, which we do see other multifamily projects coming forward. And this is a single-family residence already on the property. It's already developed property with some great trees on there that we're, like I said, we're hoping they keep for their water policy, using existing landscaping as much as possible. So, but this will be taken down and redeveloped. This is reviewed for all our site plan review criteria, and it meets all our code requirements, and the lighting and stuff will be reviewed at permitting. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm free to answer any questions that you may have.
Commission members have any questions for Tammy?
Tom Hutchison here. Tammy, has the neighbor to the north that's right adjacent to the property been notified of what's going on?
Site plans have no notifications to the adjacent property owners.
Other questions? I noticed that the applicant isn't here. Did they say they wouldn't able, were not able to attend, or what?
I didn't hear from them.
I would hope we aren't getting to a situation where applicants assume that it's going to be passed without being present to present or ask questions. Chelsea?
Yes, if I may. Good morning, Chair and Commission members. I'm Chelsea Walton, the interim director for community development. I did speak with the applicant. I can't remember if it was earlier this week or later last week. They were planning to attend. I don't know if the schedule change may have messed with their calendars, but they did at the time intend to attend. So we can definitely follow up with them, but I can assure you that they would, would attend if they were able.
Of course, the obvious question might be, did they intend to attend here or the old building?
So I was at City Hall right before 9:00 a.m., just kind of, you know, waiting to make sure no one showed up there, and we didn't have anyone. I left though shortly thereafter.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd just like to put on the record that it's nice to have the applicants attend. We had one before where they didn't attend either on that, so I don't want to have an assumption out there that because it's coming here, it's going to be a slam dunk. And myself, I had a couple questions for the applicant on that, so. Okay. Is there a motion concerning this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman.
Tom?
Moved to recommend approval of site plan SITE 23-002, Valley Street Apartments, per the site plan submitted.
We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Tom Hutchison, I'll second.
All right. Motion, second. Any further discussion? If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion pass on that. Tammy, you want to talk about the LDC?
Okay. Give a minute for the switch presentations.
Good luck on the window.
So we have three proposed amendments. So in 2020, when the City of Prescott, we kind of shut our doors for a little while. As staff, you know, me being a new person to the City of Prescott, doing code amendments with the county, and learning a new code was very, you know, interesting because we noticed some duplicate, some things that countered other portions of the code, and we saw a lot of things that needed to be cleaned up in our code. So we have brought these forward today. We did start these in 2020, but these were some of the ideas, and these are the ones, the low-hanging fruit, that we feel that really needs to be moved forward sooner than later. So the first one, so per this, the City of Prescott Land Development Code for accessory structures, there's some certain criteria you have for detached accessory structures. The first is the total square footage you're allowed on your property, no matter what size of property you have. So you're allowed either 600 square feet total of detached accessory structures, that's sheds, pergolas, detached guest houses and such. We look at all the square footage, and you're allowed a certain allowance. So it's either 600 square feet or 50% of the primary's livable area. So if you have a 2,000-square-foot house, you're allowed 1,000 square feet total of detached accessory buildings. You're also only allowed three detached accessory buildings total on a property in Prescott. So what we're looking at is some of these larger parcels, so one acre or more, because a lot of people are buying these properties with the intent to build bigger structures, a bigger garage, a workshop. RV garages are very prominent right now, which this will get to our next amendment, too, because garages, the way our definition of gross floor area is, do not count towards that square footage of detached accessory buildings, only storage habitable, anything other than parking vehicles. So what we're proposing, currently, you're only allowed this much square footage, even if you have a one-acre or large parcel. So what we're proposing to do is, in these larger parcels in the RE2 acre and SF35, zoning districts and lots one acre or greater, the total enclosed for area of all structures shall not exceed the lot coverage allowance. This is what you see out in the county. You have a lot coverage allowance you're allowed, and that's what we would kind of want to stick, have this here, because that's what people are kind of buying these larger lots for, is to have more accessory structures or horse property or other farm animals. We're seeing a lot of that right now. Also, on 252E, the second one with the highlighted down there, so that's where you're allowed three accessory buildings, detached accessory buildings. So on here, there shall be, be no limit on the number of accessory buildings that may be located in a parcel in the RE2 and SF35. On lots one acre or greater and in non-residential, so for commercial and industrial, there is no limit on the number of accessory buildings you can have. So we want to kind of categorize these with it on one acre or greater lots, just in these two zoning districts. We're kind of limiting it to these two zoning districts because those is where you're going to see the larger lots on them, and more rural outside the core of the city. And we also wanted to make sure to clarify on this, in this section, that the maximum height allowed is for 20 feet. That's only spelled out in one other section, so we wanted to just bring it here so it's easier, more user-friendly for the public, that you're only allowed 20 feet for any detached accessory structures. And then for residents, you're allowed still the 35 feet for your single-family residence. So that's what we're proposing for, for this portion of it, which kind of leads us into the next one. Go ahead, Ted.
Tammy, could you go back for a second?
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember, we had a proposal come for, before us for single-family rental homes on Rossar Road. And I think Rossar Road was FF, SF35, was it not?
On those lots, I believe they necessarily were.
So are you saying that on Rossar Road, you could have unlimited number of outbuildings on a SF35 lot?
If this goes through, you would be able to be, to cover the lot coverage, which is about, in a SF35, I think it's like 30% of the property with structures. So when you get up into these higher, also zoning districts, you're allowed less coverage on your property, too. So that's going to be limiting really what you're, how much the property will be developed.
Tammy, if someone now, the way it is, wanted to do that, would they have to come and get an exception?
They'd have to apply for variance.
Tammy, Matt Pedrag, the deputy city attorney, can you just explain to the Commission what you mean by lot coverage allowance? What does that mean?
So lot coverage is how much of the property you can cover with structures. So in these higher zoning districts, SF35 and the RE2, it's like 20 to 30%. When you get into SF9, SF6, the highest lot coverage we have is 50%, unless it's commercial or industrial, and some of those areas don't have any lot coverage allowance restrictions. But in these, we do, and the intent is they're more rural, more on the outskirts of the city, they're not in platted subdivisions, probably 95% of them, and that, this is, those are the areas you're going to see the greater, the bigger lot sizes. So this is what we're seeing coming through. People are asking for more in these areas because that's why they bought it. They thought it was similar to what you'd see in the county or in other jurisdictions that allow more. So we're trying to just relax the code in these zoning districts to see how it works first, and then if it's something that we see that there's still some need for relaxation later, because once you relax the code, you can't take it back. Once we relax any codes, we can't make it stricter unless it's a public health safety issue per state statutes. So anything that we bring in front of you is a relaxation, and it's based on conversations that we have with the public on a daily or weekly basis, is that in these little other zoning districts with these larger lots, we're seeing people wanting to do more, and it's mostly the accessory buildings. The car guy that wants a bigger garage for those collector cars, or the workshop, you know, people want to tinker at home, people are retired. During COVID, we saw a lot of this. People want to be home more, so they wanted more outbuildings and more structures and their man caves and such. So this will allow that in those larger lot areas, on one acre or larger.
Tammy, do you have a map that shows where we have SF35s?
We will bring that forward. So this is just an introduction to these, and later, when we bring it forward, we will show you where these areas are that affect.
Tammy, I have a question. Jim Kloszuski, the maximum height of 20 feet, and part of this is perhaps to help folks who might want to put a detached RV garage. When I was selling homes in Yavapai Hills where we had RV garages attached, you're either looking at 14, 16-foot doors, plus then the height above the doors, and then you have a pitched, usually ceiling for your roof line. I'm not sure 20 feet would allow somebody to have a pitched roof.
We're finding they're fine.
They're fine, okay.
Most of the time, and most of the time with those areas, they're attached. So if it's attached to the house, they go up to 35 feet. But if it's detached accessory, all those structures are only allowed 20 feet max. And the intent is that it doesn't overpower the main residences on the house. So that's what we're kind of seeing. And this is just to make it, this, this section of the code more user-friendly, because you have to jump around the code a lot, so we're trying to bring it into the areas where it should be, rather than just where it talks about heights. So that was the intent of bringing that last G, adding that to the section. So our next one is a gross floor area definition. So this is where I talked about, so when we look at the, the square footage allowance for detached accessory structures, the thing is that we're finding, the definition for gross floor area takes out the garages, so from that square footage allowance. So right now, it currently, what it says is that the total, the total enclosed, sorry, my allergies are killing me right now, so I'm kind of blundering. The total enclosed area of all floors of a building measured to the outside face of the structural members and exterior walls, including halls, so that's how we measure the lot coverage allowance, we go to the outside of the, of the walls. But by excluding areas used exclusively for vehicle parking or loading. So because of that, in this definition, it's not really a gross floor area anymore, it's a net floor area. So we're wanting to clean this up because we have this problem when projects are coming through. Right now, we don't count the, the garages towards that square footage allowance for detached accessory buildings. So they could put a 500-square-foot garage, but that 500-square-foot doesn't count towards the total allowed square footage of accessory buildings. And with these smaller lots, we're starting to see a little bit more development of them and more structures on them. But they still can't exceed the three, the three allowed detached accessory buildings or the 20-foot height with these. So it still comes out of those criteria, but the, right now, the way the code reads is that when we're looking at the total square footage of detached accessory buildings, areas used for, as a garage and for parking vehicles does not count towards that square footage. So what we're posted, we're proposing is just to take that out, to clean it up, and that way, for us, our math's easier to do, and when we're looking at these detached accessory structures, it's going to be easier for us, and it actually is the gross floor area, because when you look at the gross floor area of the house, it doesn't count the garage.
Tammy, now, the floors that we're looking at here, these are the livable floors versus if you had, say, an unfinished area underneath it, you know, you got the cement walls in or window, but there's no carpeting and so forth?
It's not, it doesn't exceed the height of seven feet. So if they have an unfinished basement, but, and it doesn't meet the seven-foot height, it doesn't count as a story or as livable area or as any area.
Well, I have a question. I've noticed that there are some hillsides in the town, and people tend to build houses with very large spaces underneath their floor. That space exceeds, sometimes exceeds over 20 feet. So the question comes in is, if that space, if it's not finished, is that going to count as livable area?
No, it does not. It has to be.
That's not what this says.
It has to be developed, it has to be permitted as livable area. So we look at what's permitted as livable.
But you're also including basements or attic areas that have a height of more than seven feet?
Then they're permitted as, they have to be permitted as livable area.
Even if they're not developed?
If they're not finished, then they're not, they're not used. It's not part of their square footage that's, that's assessed.
It seems that the verbiage here is just a little confusing.
And we'll look at it some more. I mean, based on that concern, that's something we can, as staff, will, will look at if we need to clean it up a little more.
Because attic areas usually are not livable.
Correct. They're storage.
Yeah, they're storage, but if it's more than seven feet, this says it's going to be included in livable area, and I don't think that's right.
Okay. Well, we'll look at that as we move this forward.
Is that, I think that was getting to your concern, too.
Yeah, well, we can look at that more and then make sure that we, if we need to take that out, too, as part of the gross floor area.
Well, I feel, you know, the attic and basement areas both, I mean, the spaces need to be finished.
Finished and permitted as that space.
As finished space.
Yeah. Yep. Then we'll, we'll look at that as we move that one forward.
Okay.
Tammy, I have a question for you. How do, how do balconies fit into this?
Balconies don't count.
Balconies are?
They don't count towards the square footage.
They don't count?
Talking decks?
Or decks, no. It's all permitted as livable, it has to be permitted as, and assessed as livable area. So we usually go to the county assessors and look at what, how they're calculating the square footage, so.
Okay.
But we'll definitely look at that and clean it up a little bit when we move it forward.
Along those lines of livable space, in my company, when, when we were doing these things, and they're still doing them, there are a number of spaces that are, start out as covered decks that end up as being living rooms. And this is not addressing those areas. They become, I mean, they're literally living space, but it's considered outside and not part of the overall deal. The way that they've usually defined that is, they being the municipality or the county or anybody, is that if the place is heated and cooled, you know, by the system that's serving the house, then it's considered occupied space. However, if you bring a space heater in there or a swamp cooler, you know, poof, it goes away. So it's, it's a nuance in there, and somehow that needs to be addressed as well.
Okay. We'll look into that. That was great, great comments for that. Is there anything else before we move forward with this next one, which will be Kaylee?
Hey. Thank you. Kaylee Nunez, Planning and Zoning. So accessory dwelling units. I'm sure most, if not all of you, have heard this term by now, but just as a recap, an ADU is an independent housing unit with its own kitchen, bathroom, living and sleeping space. They are typically smaller, under 1,000 square feet, but not always. So our current code, I didn't put all the bullet points in there, but I zoomed in on the important part, per LDC 2.5, 0.6, 0. B, guest quarters shall not be utilized as separate rental units. However, short-term rental units are allowed due to overarching state legislation passed about five, six years ago. So we, we allow short-term rental units, but not long-term rental units in these guest quarters. So there's a little picture of different formats of ADUs, detached and attached, there's a lot of different options. So.
Question, how do you define, is this working?
Yes. You just have to be really, really close to it.
How do you define short-term rental?
30 days or less.
And a long-term rental?
Over 30. That's it, yeah.
The reality is, is, I mean, I live, I live downtown, and just about every adjacent house to my property is a vacation rental. And so in that area, though, there are people that rent for 35 days, you know, two months and 30 days. And I will tell you, I don't mind them, they've been, they've been good. The people that have been there have been good, and I have the home phone numbers of all the owners, so I can call them at 3:00 in the morning if I need to. But the point being is that it seems to me that if you're trying to get any kind of stability in a neighborhood, allowing long-term rentals from accessory structures would be something that you would want to pursue. Because I think that just adds a stability to the neighborhood.
Yes, that's, yes, that's why we're here. And, you know, I think if you ask the average homeowner, would you rather have a short-term rental next to you or a long-term? I think more people would err on the side of long-term. But maybe that's, oh, going backwards.
The way we have it right now, you could have 12 different people in there over a year.
Oh, yeah, more. I mean, a lot of the, you know, the Airbnb's are for like, you know, weekends.
Yeah.
Or what have you, so it's very transient. So, you know, there's a lot of other Arizona communities that allow ADUs, Flagstaff, Tempe, Tucson, among some. There are entire states that have passed legislation allowing ADUs. Now, we're not there as Arizona, but I'm just saying, we are, there's a lot of legislation heading in the direction of removing single-family zoning. Again, this is not nearly that, you know, broad of a sweep. This is simply a bite-sized approach to modifying single-family zoning to add more housing. So an idea is you could build in requirements to minimize impact on neighboring properties. So they will have to meet the setback requirements, the height maximum, the height maximum. You could establish a square footage maximum and/or an off-street parking requirement. Yes. So these slides are from the Land Use Law Conference we went to last year down in Phoenix. You'll be hard-pressed to find a lot of planning publications or conferences that don't talk about ADUs anymore. In fact, I just got the Quarterly American Planning Association magazine in the mail yesterday, and guess what? There's an article on why ADUs are becoming beneficial across the country. So, so just two slides I took from there. One, one was a presentation from a professor at the U of A, kind of highlighting how single-family zoning is the direction it's headed out. Now, it's going to obviously take some time for that to happen across the country, but another great presentation we saw was by the City of Tucson, Planning and Zoning, about how they revamped their, they call it casitas there, but their ADU program. So, you know, it's, it's time, you know, timely we do this, especially with our aim to add more housing stock in the city, and this, again, is an easy way to do it and could have, you know, secondary benefits to homeowners, such as a passive income stream. So I am open to any questions.
Mr. Chairman? Nice presentation, Kaylee, thank you. How would this affect, is, well, there's a, again, we have done a number of these, multi-generational houses, where you have, you know, mom and, typically, mom and dad, you know, houses, where you have, you know, mom and, typically mom and dad, you know, and the kids get divorced and one of them moves back with kids or something like that. They have their separate kitchen, they have, they have family areas where they come together, and other areas where they have their own separate facilities. How does this issue address those kinds of situations? Because typically it was, if you had two kitchens in a house, it was no longer a single-family.
Yeah, this would, this would find a way to make that permissible, so long as, you know, they had it permitted correctly. You know, again, I brought up the definition here, it, you know, to be an independent unit has to have its own kitchen, bathroom and living space, and, and that can be attached. So it's a way to make it permissible-
Okay.
-and maybe it will encourage, because there are people doing this, you know, as-is right now.
Really?
Really, it's happening. And we'd like to encourage folks to do it the right way by-
Yeah.
-allowing it. And I don't know if I answered your question with that.
Sort of, kinda. Yeah, as it moves forward, we'll, I'll probably get some more answers on that. The other thing I kind of like about this is that it does tend towards the issue of affordability, and that's a, that's a big step forward in the right direction. And like you said, there are people out there right now that are renting sheds, you know, to live in.
Yeah, again, it's, it's bite-sized, but you put together, like, we had that teacherage passed by council the other day, you start putting together all these bite-sized approaches, and they start adding up, so that's, that's kind of our hope.
I like it. I, I think it's great.
I, I have a question, though. Somewhere in one of these slides, I think he said something to the effect that single-family housing is going away?
It's a trend, so I was just highlighting it a trend nationally, and I-
Well, legislatively, too.
Legislatively, I, I debated whether to bring that in, but we've seen it enough in planning publications and through actual, I mean, there's, there's states that have done away with the single-family. It's just something I wanted to put on the radar. We're not obviously suggesting we take away single-family zoning in Prescott, but we're saying there may come a point where federal legislation or mandates that we build in more flexibility for housing.
So this gets us kind of ahead of the curve, as something, some of the trends we're seeing come from the state and from federally. So this is something that is being brought, discussed locally, too, in the state, the state legislatures, when we see bills come through, starting in January, every year they're trying to figure out different ways, and this is one of the things deregulate, well, taking away zoning restrictions, basically, is what they've been trying to do. But this is a trend that we're seeing federally coming down the pike, so we're just trying to get ahead of the curve, and then, but we have discussed this for the last few years as an option. This is just something to help with this issue we're seeing within the city of Prescott, that allow these to be rented as long-term legally, rather than people doing them not legally. Right now, they can rent it out, and if we go up to the door and say, hey, they can say, hey, I'm a cousin, I don't pay rent. How do we know? You know, so it's already happening, we just want to legitimize it, get it in our records, and then we would know better, know more, as it's moving forward, that there are long-term rentals.
How would this coexist with HOAs and some of the rules they have?
Well, Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong, if it is, if an HOA precludes this type of thing, then it would not be allowed. So what we say to folks in HOAs, your HOA rules are on top of the city's zoning rules. We don't enforce them, but you need to mind them, and they're usually above and beyond what we have.
Well, I was gonna, part of the area I was gonna go to, if the feds or the state overrule, get rid of single-family housing, then to some that, I, I guess, has anybody addressed the issue of, could this be a taking?
Well, that, yeah, that will be part of a much larger conversation, as far as if and when that ever happens in Arizona.
And are they addressing that, they being the planning community, legislators, things like that, people who have the opportunity to take, to change the rules? Is there any kind of discussion happening about what the impact of those rule changes could be?
Not really, because a lot of the public doesn't really know what's going on until it's, it's approved. You know, that's the problem, we see all these legislative bills come through every year.
Wasn't that delightful?
Nobody knows what's going on, and plus, like, we see what now going on, then you have the strikers, which are a headache in itself, where if they, if a bill's not moving, they can strike that language and add it on to another bill that has nothing to do with it. And we see that happening right now. Twice, we had some really ugly legislation coming through, it got denied on one floor, it got striked, added on to another bill, and striked and added on to another bill. So that's what we're kind of seeing happening right now.
I understand that process, and we don't have any control, nobody has any control over that, well, the legislature would if they wanted to.
But if it does federally come down that we can't have single-family, that's something we're going to have to adapt to and figure out.
When they say, when they say you can't have single-family, that means that you can't restrict multifamily occupancies in what was a single-family neighborhood. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes.
Oh, boy.
And you'll, you'll find, you know, I can't speak definitively for the planning community, but you'll see that there's support for it, less than there is. You know, and there was a presentation at the Land Use Law Conference, I took that excerpt from, that was saying we are underplexed. That was the term the professor-
Is that really a word?
That's a term the professor used, so it's, you know-
Figures.
Yeah, you're kind of, walking to find, you're, you're straddling the line between private property rights and the need for more housing, so. It's a community for city of Prescott, planning and zoning, we certainly are taking that into consideration, and this is a very mild approach to adding more housing, in my opinion. ADUs don't have a significant impact on neighborhood character like, you know, an apartment complex would, so.
Possibly. Are there, are you restricting the number of ADUs that you can have on a single-family parcel?
That's something we can-
Yes, yes. So again, that's why we're like, bringing this forward for, just to take the temperature on it. We, we can write in a stipulation that one per, you know, single-family lot, we can definitely do that.
Because right now, you, you can have, you can have up to three. So the way the code reads right now, an accessory, so a detached guest house is an accessory building. Right now, per the code, all we regulate is the total square footage that you're allowed and the number of structures. So right now, if you're allowed 1,000 square feet of detached accessory buildings, you're allowed three detached accessory structures with a total square footage of 1,000 square feet.
So yes, we can write in protections, Will.
I think that, and I'm also thinking that one of the trends that's happening in the affordability sector is tiny houses. And tiny houses are houses that usually are under 400 square feet.
Which we do, we allow those right now, they just have to be on a foundation, so.
And fine to be on a foundation, you know, as opposed to a set of wheels. The, the issue there comes in, in that those tiny houses will, you could probably put five or six of them and still be under 1,000 square feet.
They would, yeah, they wouldn't be allowed to have five accessory structures.
What if they attach them? What if they put them next to each other and physically attach them?
I mean, there are these-
You're just bringing up-
Yeah, there are these wild possibilities.
But that's something you can do now.
Of tiny home clusters.
Except the five, because we still limit the number of accessory, that's not changing. So you're still allowed three detached accessory structures, the square footage allowance, except in the RE2 and R1, so that's something we'd have to think about. But if we do stipulate or add it into code that you're only allowed one detached accessory dwelling unit, that would limit at least that portion, but you would be allowed other detached accessory structures. So we can limit that and clean that up. That is something that needs to be cleaned up, too.
I'm, I'm glad you brought this up, because if there ever was an example of unintended consequences, I think this, this touches on it, because there's a lot of things we haven't considered yet. I mean, there's additional parking.
Which is required now. So right now, if you're putting a detached accessory dwelling, you have to have one on that parking space for that. So that's stuff that we already have in our code and it's addressed, so.
What if the detached one has two bedrooms? Do you need two spaces now or just still one?
Well, we, we'll consider that, but I think, too, you, you, big point of this is, these protections aren't built in for short-term rentals currently. You know, we, we have, you know, you can have a different person in there every couple days, you can have a party of eight people, and you know, a little casino right now, every weekend. So the idea is making it welcoming to long-term rentals that have some protections built in, may encourage people to go this way instead of the short-term rental route.
Overall, I think I like, I like the direction that you're, you're exploring. You know, I think that there's a lot of, as Ted mentioned, there's a lot of, there could be some potential un, what was the word that she used?
Unintended consequences.
So, but I really like the idea of going to, because short-term is allowed, short-term is less stable than long-term, I kind of like the idea of the long-term rentals being allowed as adjacent to, as, as an ADU. So some of the things, though, that I think are going to be interesting is that when you start to remove the single from single-family housing, that there may be some unintended consequences from, quite frankly, from a legal standpoint, I think, because if I bought in my neighborhood, and my neighborhood was supposed to be this based on the codes that you had, and now people can start adding on more and more structures, I'm now no longer living in a single-family neighborhood, I'm living in a multifamily neighborhood.
So this, we're not, we're not touching that yet, we're going to wait and see what comes out, you know, with, with the feds, but right now, this is just one tool we have in our toolbox of something that we can do as a city to try to encourage more workforce housing options. It's just to create, it's a tool in our box for, to, with a problem we have here in the city with workforce housing, this is an option we have. Right now, they're being rented out illegally for long-term rentals. We know that's happening, we just can't, you can't prove it, though. So this is a tool to allow it to be legalized, and then we can actually put some restrictions on to only limit it to one and clean up some of the other things that we don't see in our code right now.
Good. Before Chelsea on-
Do I have a question? Do you see that we would need to restrict the number of people that could be in a unit?
That would be restricted through fire and building codes.
Okay.
And right now, it's already being restricted with the short-term rentals, because they have to get a license to the city.
In essence, though, by doing this, you're not necessarily making more workforce housing. Workforce housing is where the rents are more affordable. There is no control over what kind of rents are going to charge others, so I, I would have trouble saying this is workforce housing. This is additional housing.
Should I stop presenting?
More property available, then that will force the rents down, but this is not going to make it workforce housing. Where was this conference, Kaylee?
So every year, there's a land use update that we go to, to find out what's gone through the legislature, and what are some of the lawsuits, you know, things coming through, through the feds and everything, that we go to every year. So we see presentations like that every year, and actually, and at the state planning conference, too.
This eerily looks like a backdoor 15-minute city initiative. So I, I think we need to study this a lot more.
Sure.
Chelsea?
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of three comments that I have relative to all of the discussion here today, and that's exactly what we want, is the discussion and feedback. So number one, to, to Mr. Riley's point, this, the overarching legislation, there is a push at the state level to take back zoning rights and regulations at the local level, and I believe our own mayor spoke to, at a, a meeting in Sedona by a state housing committee where they were looking at this. And we're, we're actively lobbying against that, we want to keep our zoning rights to ourselves. Number stu, number two, staff is not advocating for removing a single-family zoning.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely wanting to, to keep the zoning at the local level, have our own codes speak to it. But number three, this proactive approach, taking a, a step in the direction that is actually beneficial to the city, also puts us in a good position and, and perception with the state. We're saying we recognize the need for additional housing units, we recognize that this could be beneficial to homeowners in the city of Prescott where costs keep going up, you can rent out a home to a local family. So there's a lot of really good reasons this, this should be looked at very carefully to craft amendments to the code that would offer the protections that we desire, but also the greater zoning flexibility. And my last point is, I was appointed as the Workforce Housing Committee Liaison, that committee has not been appointed yet. We're, I believe it's going to be in May that, that they'll officially be appointed. But one of the first educational pieces that we'd like to present to this committee is the ability to provide more workforce housing through zoning flexibility. So this kind of marries up and goes right along the same lines as, as what we're looking for. And, and to Mr. Michaelman's point, this is not about specific workforce housing, but it helps the inventory. It'll help with, with just a little bit of pressure relief as far as the inventory in the Prescott area. So for food for thought, that's kind of my two cents, but thank you, ladies, for the wonderful presentation, appreciate it.
Kaylee, did you finish your presentation?
No, it got taken over. It's okay. Any more questions?
Do you want to go ahead and finish what you had?
Oh, well, yes, the slides are done.
Ah.
There were only three slides.
Okay.
Yes.
Nothing else you want to add to it, then?
Oh. Yeah, I was, well, Chelsea actually covered the last point I was going to make. No, these, these aren't necessarily going to be at a workforce housing rate, but the idea is any inventory you can add to the market might alleviate the pricing just a little bit.
Supply and demand.
Supply and demand, yes.
And the end slide that we had was, you know, regards to, we call it Prop 207, that's how we all knew about it, but there's been a newer Prop 207, so we can't.
Marijuana legalization.
Yeah, legalization of marijuana was possible, Prop 207. So we were talking about, the one that was done way long ago, in regards to, that we need to, when we start talking about code amendments, that's, this is the one thing we always look at, we may make sure that we're doing relaxations of codes, we're not making them stricter. We never want to make them stricter unless it's a public health safety issue. Our goal is always to look at, what can we do for our city code to look at to make it better and more user-friendly for the public? You know, we listen to people and we review projects all the time, so we kind of have an idea of what in our code isn't working or can be amended, and these are the things that we're bringing forward to you. These were, like I said, are really low-hanging fruit that we really wanted to get moving forward, and then we have a whole bunch of others that we've, we've been reviewing since 2020 that bring forward at a later date. But we just wanted to bring these to you as an introduction, that we're going to be bringing these forward, we still, we have to advertise, and we have to do all this other stuff, but we wanted to bring for you, and you guys had a great dialogue that gives us direction as we move these forward, what we need to really look at, and we really appreciate that. That's what we wanted out of this dialogue today.
Well done.
Okay, so more to follow, yeah. So there's, that's the end of that portion of our presentation today.
Any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
So next is we have staff announcements. Chelsea introduced herself.
I just wanted to say thank you all for your service to this committee, and I'm here to assist our wonderful planning team, as well as you all, so my door is always open if you feel the need to reach out. And thank you all for your understanding in the, in the timing change of this meeting, so looking forward to working with you. And I'm available if you want to chat after the meeting.
Okay, good, thank you.
So our next is a general plan update. So our general plan website is up and running, it's planprescott.com. On there, you have a link under public participation to a survey and some other questions we're asking the public to fill in. We just got a press release out, but so far, we've had it up and running for over a month, and we have already 135 people done the surveys and 25 people- and we have already 135 people have done the surveys, and 25 people have finished. We have some open-ended questions to fill out, and 25 people have done that so far. So we're kind of pleased with that, even a huge push. But we have a whole bunch of events coming up and stuff, and we'll keep you guys apprised of how we're going with our general plan update. Any questions about that? Nope. Okay. City council action on projects. So the other day, at our city council meeting, we had two applications that you reviewed. The first one was the site plan for the Sunset Apartments, which was right on the other side of this project you heard today. That was approved with no issues or concerns. And we also had the Taylor Hicks rezoned for the teacher housing, the teacher, teachery? Teacherages, they're calling them, for the housing there, and that was also approved by the city council on Tuesday. Is there any questions?
To continue with that part, a while back, we, the commission agreed that we would rotate attending the council meetings when items that we have seen come up in front of that. So you will be getting a phone call somewhere down the road from staff saying, you know, this, your, your time is here. Can you make it? And if you can, fine. If not, it goes to the next person on that, but it will come back to you on that. So just forewarn you on that part, okay? And I'll work with staff on how to set up this list then, okay? Mr. Chairman, I add, and the reason for that is if the city council has any questions as to why we, the way we did, you can provide the technical information to share that with them. And the council is very gentle when they call you up to make comments. So, okay. Anything else? If not, meeting is adjourned.